That gives you a quorum, Mr. Prier.
Thank you. Well, let's go ahead and commence the meeting. Josh, I don't have this printed in front. Thank you. That's what I was looking for. Let me read a short announcement pursuant to the Governor's Executive Orders, Number 16, Number 34, and Number 51, and Number 60, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. Members of the Planning Commission will participate by electronic means, and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the members and citizens of Gallatin. At this time, if we could have a short roll call, but more importantly, a vote to hold the meeting electronically. So if you'll answer the name and answer with present and approve, Mary Ann, call the roll.
Chair Prier.
Present and approved.
Mr. Harris.
Present and approved.
Mr. Wilson.
Present and approved.
Councilman Fennell. Dr. Organe. Mr. Stroud.
Present and approved.
Ms. Hibbler.
Present and approved.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All interested members of the public may attend, and all commissioners and applicants may attend by going to the web address as shown on the screen there, or call 470-250-9358. The webinar ID number is 864-0872-4942. We can move on to the first item. Item number one is Speedway Master Development Plan. Jillian, are you presenting this item?
Item number one is being represented by Sharon Burton.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
Okay, because I've got the, this is just a reapproval, it was an extension of the final master development plan for the Speedway convenience store. It was originally planned for the intersection of Goodview Way and Greenlee Boulevard, but the master plans do expire, I think it's a three-year time period. This one's due to expire in April of '21. They haven't changed anything on it, and it's just merely an extension of what's already approved.
All right, thank you, Sharon. Do we have a representative for the applicant on line?
We do. Jeff, I need hosting privileges back in order to unmute. The name is QS3. We're doing some behind-the-scenes things here. There we go.
You're all set.
Thank you, Jeff. User QS3, you've raised your hand indicating you are speaking on behalf of the applicant.
Yes, sir. Thank you. My name is Jared Cron. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jared Cron. I'm a Speedway project manager. I appreciate your time tonight. Ms. Burton is correct. We are requesting an extension of the approval timeline due to some economic burden that we've experienced this past year has caused some delays and put some projects temporarily on hold due to some budget constraints. And this is one of those projects. The project, it's previously been approved for site plan approval. As mentioned, that expires in April of next year, but we're looking to grant and request an extension for that site plan approval for as much time as staff will allow. I know that's up to three years, so we'd like to request the maximum extension available this evening. So appreciate your time, and I'm available for any questions.
My only question is, is this the project that's out off of 386 on Goodview Drive, I believe?
Yes, sir, that's correct. We're at the corner there of Goodview Way and Greenlee Boulevard. There's been some development in this area, particularly behind the site with some workout center and the storage units farther down Goodview. But this property is located on the corner diagonal to Harris Lane.
Yes, sir, I see it now. I just can't believe it's been three years since we discussed it. I remember, it seemed like last year. Time flies when you're having COVID.
Yes, sir.
If nothing has changed about it, I think we worked through all the details. Does any other member of the commission have any questions about this?
My only question, and more just for general curiosity, do you guys have an idea of when you might try to bring this to construction?
This is still a project that we're watching closely. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic and trying to forecast when businesses will open 100%, it's difficult at this time. That's why I'm requesting the full amount possible for this extension, because trying to avoid requesting another extension if it was not enough time. So I don't have a date in mind yet, sir.
I'm just curious in general. If nothing's changed, I don't see any reason not to move that forward, so it sounds good to me.
I agree with that.
I believe the max we're allowed to give on the site plan is a three-year extension, but Josh, correct me if I'm wrong.
The staff is supporting a three-year extension of this FMDP.
Yeah. I certainly see no problem with it. Any other questions? If not, okay, well then I think it'd be simple enough. Thank you. We'll move on to item number two.
Thank you.
Oh, item number two is Chick-fil-A amended preliminary master development plan, revised final master development plan. Who's presenting this item? Dustin?
Dustin Shane, Gallatin Planning. So this is just Chick-fil-A wanting to come in and remodel their site. On the screen here, I have the existing site. You can see that there's just one drive-through lane. About to pull up the proposed site, they're gonna have a double lane go through and, I hear echo, it's hard to, they're gonna have a double drive-through lane go through. They're gonna need to reduce one of their buffer yards on the east side to make room for that. So this would require an alternative buffer yard. They've currently got the type 20, which is what they are required to have. They want to reduce it down to about a 14-foot. Staff supports this because they're just next door to a parking lot, so we don't see any negative effects really on the neighbors. This is the elevations they're proposing. They're gonna repaint part of it and replace the current awnings with fabric, black fabric awnings. So this is basically what they're putting at all their new locations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
We do. We have Mr. Sean Hickman, Chad Ross, Ms. Donna Brown, and Travis with EnterPlan. Your lines have all been unmuted. If you wanted to select one of you to start speaking.
Hi, this is Sean Hickman from EnterPlan. I'm representing Chick-fil-A as the civil engineer on the site. I can start speaking, and then anybody else can jump in if they'd like to. We are adding the second order point, like Dustin talked about, and there'll be a canopy over those menu boards there, and that's on the east side of the site, the same side that the landscape reduction is on. And then we will also be putting that canopy over the pickup side, just to guard the workers as they're out there. They actually take orders face-to-face, and they have tablets that they use, and thus will guard them from the elements.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
We did want to put something out there that we'd like to do if possible, and that would be to extend the canopy that we're proposing over where the pickup window is, to extend that to cover both of the drive-through lanes. We're proposing to have the double drive-through go all the way around the building, and we would like to extend that canopy to cover the second drive-through lane. Is that something that we could do with this project right now, with this planning commission meeting, or is that something we'd have to come back for?
I apologize, Miss Brown. I didn't mean to cut you off before you were finished. Josh or Bill, they would need to have that canopy shown on the plans for our meeting in a couple of weeks, wouldn't they?
Go ahead, Bill.
Yes, that's correct. I believe this drawing does show, the top drawing probably shows it better, that there is a canopy extension over both lanes, if I'm not mistaken, and that would be the order lanes, whereas the pickup lane, and I think if we can advance to the other slide, I think we have another slide. Well, it shows it from the other direction, but it's our site plan slide. I believe there is. Okay, not that one. Okay, that probably shows it best. That shows both the order lanes as well as the pickup lanes having dual lanes, so there'll be opportunities to cover both of those on either side of the building. So that needs to be clearly described on the remedal plan that you're going to have the planning commission consider in two weeks. So on this side, it appears that on the east side of the building, that both lanes would be covered, but on the west side of the building, only one lane closest to the building would be covered. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, please.
That is correct. That's what we're showing on the plans, but we would like to put a double canopy over the west side of the building in addition to the double canopy on the east. The plan only shows the single canopy on the west side of the building.
Okay, so do each of the planning commissioners understand that they're wanting to modify the plan that's shown here on the screen to indicate dual-lane canopies adjacent to the building or touched to the building?
Yeah.
I have a question. Will this eliminate any parking places?
No, it would not eliminate any parking places. We would put the columns in the center, so it would go in that walkway that's in the middle. It would basically be just copying that same order point canopy that's on the east side, just copying it over to the west side where the pickup window is.
I do.
Now, there are a few parking spaces that are eliminated by the revision itself, but with the auxiliary parking just to the east, there's not an issue with not having enough parking.
I agree. Actually, when I looked at this, I was kind of glad to see it, I think with COVID and people changing how they use fast food, you know, certain restaurants, it's changed. The parking lot of the Chick-fil-A's a little bit interesting sometimes. All the cones, the parking spaces that are there can't be used anyway, because the way the line's running around that building. So I actually see this as being a positive for Chick-fil-A, for that property to solve a congestion problem over there. So, and I actually like the idea of the canopy on both sides, so I don't see any negatives to this.
Do you have something similar to this at Hennesseyville?
There is. There's also one at Providence Marketplace in Mount Juliette, but we don't have one yet in your area that actually has the canopy that covers both lanes for the pickup window.
And who is speaking there? I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
I'm sorry, this was Donna Brown with EnterPlan.
Donna Brown?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Donna.
Well, I'll just second what Matt said, and that is that we're gonna say a lot of changes to drive-throughs with fast food, you know, increase the capacity of drive-throughs. I also wanted to mention that the, you know, the modifications to the buffer yard on the east side, I think that's part of this, that's acceptable. And I wanted to point out that the changes that we, the tree cutting that's occurring on the west side is not Chick-fil-A's doing. That's the trees have grown up under the power line, and I think Gallatin Utilities had to cut those to keep them out of the power lines. But the only reason I bring that up is I wanted to find an opportunity to ask the question. When we have a site plan approved, I'm asking this question of staff, when we have an initial site plan approved, does the electric department weigh in with comments? Do they have an opportunity to weigh in with comments?
Mr. Prier, this is Josh. They do have the opportunity to weigh in on all site plans. We've, we're continually making progress on providing mutual understanding of our requirements and trying to identify situations like this for the long term on the type of tree and the location of overhead power lines to try and eliminate future conflicts. We have this problem with the tree topping in several places across the city where older developments are, and as we see redevelopment opportunities, we try to identify ways we can mitigate that proactively. But in this case, where the trees are already existing and the utility line is already existing, there's not a whole lot we can do right now from a staff standpoint.
Right. I just want to point out that I guess we need to watch those plans sharply and make sure that we're not telling an applicant it's okay to plant this species under there, and then go in and our utility department has to cut them out. And I also wanted to go on record and make sure that the public doesn't get the perception that Chick-fil-A's modifying the buffer yard on both sides of the building, and they're not. They're not modifying it on both. Everything looks, I'm fine with this plan, and like Matt said, it's an improvement. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask the applicants on this image that's shown on the screen if they would be willing to consider landscaping that area at the northwest corner of the building that's shown in the cloud, the kind of a crimson-colored cloud there, which is a gore zone area that they're proposing to strike as opposed to landscape. They would be moving, removing three trees on the west side of the building, and if it's possible, because they could landscape that area, and they don't necessarily have to put a large tree in there, but they can put some accent trees and/or shrubs in that area to make up for the loss in landscaping that they have.
Yeah, I would have to check with Chick-fil-A on that. I'm not sure. They like landscaping. They're really good with landscaping, so they always like to add it, but I would still have to defer to them. I don't know if Chad Ross is on.
Hey, Sean, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely fine. We can definitely do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I will say that that site is one of the better landscape sites of any business in town.
Are there any additional questions for the applicant? We're seeing none, then I think that looks good, and I'm assuming that you'll show, will you be able to show some type of revision to show the canopy, or is that not enough timeframe to show that between now and the meeting?
Yes, we are already working on it now, so we will get that over to you this week so that you can update your drawings.
That would be great. If there are no additional questions, then we'll move on to item number three. Item number three is Windsong Phase 2A and 2B preliminary plat. Who's presenting that item?
Okay, I've got this one again, too. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
All right. This is just another extension. This is a preliminary plat for the multi-family lots at Windsong, and our preliminary plats only have a year on them, and this one is being renewed before they get, so they can get the final in. This is located at the corner of, you know, 109 and North on Open Space Tracks. And they're just renewing the plat.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a representative for the applicant on line?
Yes, Sam Christman with Reagan Smith. And as you stated, we are just looking for an extension of this plat. The plat has stayed the same since the initial submittal, and we don't have any issues with the comments.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the applicant if they'd be willing to provide, and if a city engineer would like to address this as well, provide a, although it's just an extension of the previously approved plat, if they would be willing to provide a temporary construction easement adjacent to certain areas along Theodory Trace on the north side and west side of that street to accommodate design and construction of that roadway, which is not part of this plat, by the way.
Ms. Christ, do you have?
I would need to discuss that with the owner, but I don't see any reason why they would be averse to, you know, allowing a temporary construction easement.
All right. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Any members of the commission? As I understood you say, there's no changes. You're just asking for an extension to the one-year PMDP time.
Yes, sir.
Any questions out there?
I don't have any questions. I don't see any problems with this at all.
Okay.
No questions.
No questions here.
Thank you. Well, seeing none, then that looks fine. We'll move on to item number four.
Thank you.
Item number four is Windsong Lot 3, the convenience store amended PMDP and FMDP. Dustin, are you handling this one?
Yes, sir. This is still down at Windsong. So this will be the first out parcel development at Windsong. Right off 109, it'll be a 4700 square foot convenience store with gas pumps. No issues with the site design as far as drainage and parking and circulation. There is kind of an issue with the buffer yards. It's a small site, and the PGC zoning that it's approved with requires a great deal of landscaping. In addition to what you see here, they're gonna need to put in 50 more shrubs and 20-some small deciduous trees. So I spoke with the landscape architect today, and we're talking about how they can meet that requirement. So they're gonna do their best. They may have to request an alternate landscaping plan, but they're gonna try to meet those requirements. Their architecture is good. They are needing to put their mechanical infrastructure for the building behind a parapet on the roof, so that's gonna restrict their ability to do the pitched roof as code requires. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna try to put in a pitched architectural feature above where you see the flat awnings now. They're gonna try to, they're gonna modify that. The canopy, they've agreed to modify to have a man stirred type roof over top of it, like we've seen around town in this zoning district. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dustin. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
So we have Ms. Elena Orr, Philip Neal, and Jason Horowitz. Your lines have all been unmuted.
Hi, this is Philip Neal with Kimley Horn, and I'm the civil engineer for the project. So I think it was well-introduced, and really, any comments pertaining to the architecture, of course, Ms. Elena can address as those come up, but I think related to the site plan, it's a pretty straightforward plan. I agree with Dustin referring to the buffer yards and/or the additional trees required in the zoning. You know, one of the struggles we're encountering on this particular project is the fact that we are wrapped on three different frontages, and with the intense tree requirement for every 500 square feet, really the over half of our landscaped area or non, you know, our pervious area is buffer yards, which the trees planted in the buffer yards don't count towards that requirement. We also have, as you can see, quite a bit of buyer retention here on site in those areas to meet the store motto requirement. So we're struggling to find the appropriate spacing and places to put the trees to meet that requirement, but I think we have some options that we can work with the reviewers to make sure we meet the intent of the code. If there's any other specific questions, I'm happy to address.
Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Actually, yeah, any questions? So you mentioned, you know, obviously the trees planted in the buffer yard don't count towards the code. If they were counted, how close would you be?
That's a great question, and I think following this, this was something that kind of came up on our end today. So we're tabulating all of the areas that are reserved for buffer yards and what the total trees we show, and actually I have it in front of me. I could probably tell you pretty quick.
Philip, I think it was 51 trees.
Total, right.
And they're almost there with this plan, if that was the total.
Yes. From my standpoint, I think it's mostly important that the landscaping is appropriate to the building and the site, that it looks good, not that it's just got as many trees jammed in just for the sake of getting the right number of trees, so. I think you're, I think you'll get it worked out.
Yeah, I do think we're close.
Any other members have any questions? Okay, well, I think the plan looks good, and it's well landscaped, so I think we can work that out. Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to item number five.
And Mr. Chairman, numbers five and six are deferred tonight.
Had that scribbled down, I forgot. So five and six having been, will be deferred. We'll move on to item number seven, which is Enick Hills, Phase 2, Section 2, a preliminary plat. Sharon, are you presenting this?
Yes, I've got this one. I've got both the preliminary and the final, which is seven and eight, if you want to cover them both. They're both identical, except the preliminary plat, this is for Hutch Court. This is Phase 2 of Enick Hills. This has been ongoing. They have, their construction plans have been approved and everything. They're just, they need the plat approved so they can just go ahead and be able to sell lots and stuff, so. It's actually adding, hmm, they're on 16 acres, a little over 16 acres, and I didn't get a count on how many actual lots there's going to be right off. I don't see them on here, but it extends out from Hutch Court. It's right there on the plat somewhere. Let's see. It is on PGC, and I know most of you who've ever driven out on horseback, you've seen the development going on up down behind It is on PGC and I know most of you who've ever driven out on horseback, you've seen the development going on up on, behind Dr. Enoch's office.
Twenty-seven additional lots.
Is that what you've got? Yeah, I didn't find the numbers up there.
So, do you have anything else Sharon, or is that it?
No, that, I think engineering had, there's a lot of grading issues with this particular area, this end of the, the, this roadway. So, I think they're working all that out. Some of the lots will have a lot more PUD on them than actual property, but.
Do we have a representative of, of the engineering department out with us tonight?
Do we, Josh? I don't know.
Nick's here.
I know Nick's here.
Nick, did you wanna present any information on this for us, our discussion?
Uh, Sharon is correct. Uh, we, although there, there is a lot of open space that is shown here. We're working off of a, a very old, uh, preliminary master development plan approval that didn't quite cover, uh, everything, um, within the stormwater requirements. And so we're, we're trying to work with the applicant to keep his acreage, uh, as far as the lot size goes. And, and that means that, um, a lot of these ponds and our retention areas are getting pushed, um, out of open space and into, um, lot space that, uh, but, but they are covered with PUDs. And you can, you can somewhat see that here in, in what you see on the screen. It's kind of, there's a lot of lines there, so it's. Uh, but yeah, some pointer there to, to show you that, that, uh, public utility and drainage easement line. Uh, you know, we have, uh, asked the, uh, the applicant. Give more open space there, but, I mean, it just doesn't work for their plan, um, according to them. And there may be a representative here to speak about it, but I don't know.
All right, thank you Nick. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
So we have Mitchell representing Greenlid.
Thank you Josh. Yes, this is Mitchell Lastly with Greenlid Design. And as Ms. Sharon Burton stated, uh, we are just requesting approval for the preliminary plat and the final plat. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sharon, did you cover seven and eight?
Mr. Chairman, both seven and eight. Uh, seven is the preliminary plat, eight is the final plat.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, that's what, thank you.
Uh, also, I'm being told, um, Enoch Hills is a subdivision that's in the flight path of the airport. So there is a restriction on maximum building height to not interfere with FAA regulations.
They've been asked to put that in a note too.
I've got a question for, for Nick. The, the water, detention areas, uh, those types of things being inside of a, inside of an easement on the actual lot. Is that, is, isn't that something we've talked about trying to avoid? Try to push that more into open spaces so we don't have problems with homeowners using things after they've, they've bought the houses? Are there any concerns with that on this project? That, that somebody might realize that they're changing something on the lot that needs to be there?
No, Mr. Harris, you're correct. It is something that we, um, have, uh, tried to avoid. Um, and this planning commission has tried to make, um, some movement in that direction. We haven't changed our regulations. Um, it's not been changed in the zoning ordinance and so it's not a specific requirement. So, again, trying to work with the applicant here on a very old approval, a fifteen-year-old preliminary master development plan. And sort of working it into today's, um, design requirements has been a challenge, to say the least.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know that I have a problem with it on this specific project. I just wanna make sure we're all, you know, we go forward trying to avoid that in the future. This, this project's a little bit unique just because you, you're right, it's an old approval and trying to bring it up to the, to the current regulations is gonna be a challenge, but, so. But there's no, for staff, there's, and we have detention areas in, in the, in a plat, but we don't, we don't have an issue where there's, um, uh, buffer yards or plants that might get removed later down the road in this application, do we?
There's always that risk, uh, Mr. Harris, but the, in this case, they are being placed in a separate open space lot that runs the perimeter of the site, so the.
That's fine.
As, as, um, I don't say inspectors, we have greater access to it. Um, but over time, people do tend to incorporate space as their own that isn't otherwise regulated.
That's, that, that answers my question on that. It is, it, the buffer yards are in the way, in the open space area in all the lots, so. All right, that's all I've got. Otherwise, I think engineering can, just working out the details.
Do we have any other questions or, or comments? Seeing none, then I think we'll move on. We've covered items number seven and eight. And item number nine is, um, Noble Park Townhomes, a final master development plan. Sharon, are you covering that one or Dustin?
I am, uh, Mr. Preger. So this is the FMDP for Noble Park at, uh, Airport and Coles Ferry. Uh, no major changes to the townhomes or the layout. You can see same architecture is approved. The only unresolved issue that I was informed of was, um, and I think Mr. Tuttle may be able to tell us whether they need a right-of-way use permit or a hold harmless agreement for the trees that are gonna be on public property.
Okay, this is, this is the one at the intersection of Woods Ferry and Coles, or Coles Ferry and, um, Airport Road?
Yes, sir.
Um, a hold harmless agreement and, and I believe, uh, we have to have a, a maintenance agreement.
Yes, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a right-of-way use agreement, cuz that, that strip is not within a right-of-way. It's just city-owned strip of property. So it would just be an agreement where they enter into with the city to maintain, uh, place and ma- maintain the landscaping.
All right, um, do we have a representative for the applicant on line?
We have, uh, Brent Smith and Preston Air.
Yes, Preston Air, uh, civil engineer on the project. And, uh, we've received staff comments and are working on addressing those. We're in agreement with those comments and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, any questions for members of the commission? Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I, I don't actually have a question, but just, uh, after reviewing the architecture, you know, at our, our last meeting, we, we asked the applicant to, to put brick and be more compliant with city consent, brick roll-up building, especially where it's so visible from Airport Road. And just wanted to commend them and say, thanks, the revised architecture looks really good and I'm looking forward to seeing this project on that intersection.
Thank you. Uh, this is Brent Smith, the developer. Uh, thank you. And there is one comment I would like to make as far as the, um, site plan. And that is, um, the sidewalk that's going along Airport Road, there was a, uh, a comment from the planning staff on that. And we were going to be pulling that sidewalk closer to our property and sort of do a winding way through it. Which will allow for any future widening of Airport Road and, um, just to make it a little bit more pleasing, but it, it'll still connect to the sidewalk on the adjoining property. But we're just gonna pull it further away from Airport Road.
That sounds like good identity. Also, there's no objections from the engineering department.
Well, we, we try, so we, yeah, thank you.
It, it would be on city property anyhow, so that's, we support that on that high-speed road to move the sidewalk further from the edge of the pavement, so.
I think it's further from the road, it's more meandering walk, that's more statically pleasing than just a straight strip of concrete. So I, I only see improvements there.
Well, we don't necessarily want a meandering sidewalk that would just increase the cost of construction and maintenance. We wanted a, a fairly direct path, but we do support it being moved further from the edge of the roadway. So it may not be meandering in the way, you know, snake-like through that area. But it will need to miss trees and miss, uh, critical utilities, so it may bend in few places.
Look forward to seeing it at the meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions or comments? Then it looks good and I second what Mr. Harris said, that the architecture looks, um, appreciate the changes to the architecture. So we'll move on, uh, from item number nine to item number, I'm sorry, now item number ten is the preliminary plat for the same property.
That's correct, Mr. Preger. I guess that could be kinda folded into the previous discussion.
Yeah.
Nothing really to see there.
Unless anyone has a question, we'll move on. I don't have an agenda printed in front of me, so do we have an item number eleven? We do. Item number eleven, um, Vintage Baker's Crossing, amended PMDP.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is Josh King. I'll be representing or discussing this item with you. Uh, next slide Dustin. So Baker's Crossing is located on Tulip Poplar between Nashville Pike and, uh, Belvedere with backing up to the CSX Railroad. Next slide please. It was originally approved in two thousand and six, the mult- with, uh, twenty-five point nine five acres of multifamily in two phases. Phase one was entitled at two hundred and ninety units of a total of three hundred and fifty-eight. The plan affecting the multifamily was last revised in two thousand and nine. Next slide please. It, uh, this was the two thousand and nine revision and you can see here in the left-hand corner, uh, it was three L-shaped buildings with significant portions of both the buildings and the site in the floodway. And it would leave a future phase here along, uh, what was going to, what, what is, uh, now Tulip Poplar, um, drive. Next slide please. The applicant is, um, revising their plans to break the buildings up and remove some of the development from the floodplain and remove the, the, uh, multifamily units out of the floodplain. One of our comments has been for these buildings that are fronting Tulip Poplar to, um, better address the street so that it gives it a little bit more of a hard edge and makes it feel, um, less like a building that's set in a parking lot and more that is, more of a building that's part of a larger community. Um, we had the existing, there are townhomes over here on the east side of the screen. U- using sort of those as a model of how buildings can address the street to create more of an urban fabric feel versus a building in a parking lot with its, uh, the business end of the building facing the street. Gillian's far more eloquent than I am at this, so, uh, I'm trying my best tonight. Next slide please. Uh, this is the plan with preserving some of the tree buffer along the property lines. Next slide. And this is the general elevations. This is a PMDP, so the elevations are, uh, preliminary at this point. And this is what has been submitted. We have, representing the applicant, we should have, if you're here representing the applicant, please raise your hand. I think we've got, uh, Greg Harris. Greg, your line has been unmuted. And if there's anyone else with your team? Mr. Chairman, um, staff has, if you want to pick it up from here, there's a fire truck passing.
Uh, okay, um, we had, um, we're looking for Mr. Harris to weigh in as a representative of the applicant, but I don't know.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Mr. Harris, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, yeah, we are, uh, wanting to pull buildings in, out of the floodway, um, decreasing the number of units from three hundred and fifty-eight, which were originally proposed, to two hundred and sixty-four. Um, you know, trying to preserve that floodway and, uh, disturb the floodplain as little as possible. Um, we've, uh, we've got comments back from staff and we're working through that. I guess the only thing, uh, that, uh, that we're looking at, like Josh was saying, the three buildings, buildings one, two and three that, uh, back up to Tulip Poplar, will, uh, will certainly work as best we can to get those tied in. There is a grade problem there. Um, the roadway Tulip Poplar will be higher than the, uh, the sidewalk that we're going, or the, uh, the parking lot in front of the buildings. So we may have an issue with, uh, with being able to tie those in grade-wise. Um, we've got, they're offset quite a few feet, probably forty-plus feet. So, you know, we'll work as best we can to try to get that tied in, but, uh, until we get the final grades prepared, I don't know if we're gonna be able to do that or not without a lot of steps in the sidewalk.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. Wanted to ask if, uh, Mr. Tuttle is still available. I think that we discussed a couple of, last month, an issue of the roadway and, uh, the contribution that this property needs to make towards those improvements. Is that correct, engineering?
Uh, yes, sir, Chairman. Uh, actually, I'm not sure if it was Greg Harris or, um, i- if it was another. I think it may have been he and, and another couple of gentlemen I spoke with back before the item was considered. Um, and I'd been wanting to reach back out to them. At that mo- at that time, um, the planning commission actually advised that we make a demand on the surety there for the Baker's Crossing, um, roadway. I, I haven't done that yet because I was actually waiting to have a conversation with, uh, these guys because I believe it, uh, it had something to do with, uh, the, the financial implications of their deal. And I wanted to, to see if this, to, to talk through, um, some options that we may have. Uh, but there, there are some things hopefully that I'm gonna try to get working behind the scenes. And, um, Greg, if, if you're the right person to talk to, um, I'd love to set something up with you to have that discussion.
Yeah, the, uh, developer, they're aware of the, of the requirement. And actually, there was a note in the, uh, in the staff comments about the two, uh, traffic signals. And yeah, we can, we certainly get together and work out the details on that.
Okay. I'll get your contact information from the planning staff, um, and, and try to give you a call. It may be Wednesday.
That's great.
Thank you Nick. Josh, can you go back a slide or two and show us the, the architecturals on this? I'm not sure I understand where the, um, okay, that one right there, the picture, the, the garden-style apartment in the upper right corner. That's obviously the bulk of the buildings back in there, but the picture, the centric in the lower left and the vintage Baker's Crossing image. Where are these buildings in, on the site?
Those are, those are just examples of kind of the flavor of the building, showing the different color. They're planted on, uh, painted brick, um, so those are not actually gonna be. So those are not actually going to be on-site. What you referenced in the upper right corner, that is, that's more typical of what the buildings will look like. Those are just kind of some examples of painted brick, some dormer windows on the, the third floor, just kind of the, the flavor of what the buildings are going to look like.
And Mr. Chairman, my comment about having the buildings address the street, the bottom two pictures, which are a larger-style building, the idea would be that the multifamily units themselves, in a perfect world, would have beautiful front entrance ways that go, that roll right into the sidewalk. Understanding that we don't live in a perfect world and the world isn't flat, the idea would be also to possibly break the massing up into smaller, more definitive chunks of a building so that it stands out a little bit more. But we can continue to work through the final design of the buildings with the, with the applicant on the FMDP. This is a FM, or PMDP revision only at this point. So there still will be an FMDP voted on by this board.
Mr. Harris, I can, I can only say that, I'm not suggesting that you were, these images are intentionally misleading, but at the FMDP stage, I think those images included in the architectural renderings kind of inadvertently misrepresent what it looks like. So I would, I would choose something else if you're displaying architectural elements. I don't know if anybody else feels the same way, but any questions from members of the commission or discussion or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out the, and one of the other slides, this area is in a critical junction of our long-term Greenway Plan. And they are showing on, at this conceptual stage, a corridor for the Greenway that would be along the creek. Now, that area is really in a junction of several greenways that come together in this area. So we want to ensure that, to ensure that, that we get the connections that are needed, that we have sufficient width generally along the creek on the far extreme west end of the property, but also some opportunity for connecting back to, with the publicly accessible Greenway to Tulip Poplar Boulevard. And the details on that alignment are not known at this time, but we will be working with the applicant before the FMDP or while the FMDP is being submitted to identify appropriate corridor for that. But we know it'll be along the creek, and this will be the critical junction point where, at the northwest corner of their site, where we will be having to move or go under the railroad trestle to be able to access the north side of the railroad tracks. So we may need additional width of easement to accommodate that. The property they're adjacent to, that we'll also have to coordinate with on this effort, is managed by the Army Corps of Engineers as well as CSX Railroad.
We need to insist on that continuity. Not just request it, we need to insist on it.
Yeah. Right now, they, they showed a 20-foot easement along the west side of their property and then a connection from their parking lot to, to that, that would be an easement. But we'll, we'll be discussing with them how we can get that connection to Tulip Poplar Boulevard from the Greenway easement on the west side of the property.
And I suppose this is a question for Engineering, considering the proximity to Station Camp Creek, is this a property that can deal with water quality without having to address the water quantity issue and our stormwater requirements?
The quality side of things, we certainly will be interested in and making sure they meet the infiltration requirements. The quantity side is something that will be, we could be more lenient on and, and look, instead of detention areas, it could just be actually excavation within the floodplain to create more storage within the floodplain. But there's, from, from this site down to Highway 31E, there, there are no other crossings. The only crossing that's being dealt with here is Highway 31E. And of course, at that point, you're, you're really at the, the backwater at the lake. And so you're not trying to pass this through the system. And so it, it really does no good to detain here in the watershed. It's not helping anything. It's not hurting anything. So, but creating more flood storage area would, would certainly, that could help things. So that's what we'd be looking at for this design when we get to that point.
And we'll, and we'll say that at the FMDP?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a question probably for, for Nick. When, going back to the conversation on the road at Tulip Poplar at our, our last meeting, you know, the voted to, to, to make a demand on the surety to do the Tulip Poplar Road, but so make sure we're not, we're not talking about delaying getting those repairs done at this point, are we?
No, Mr. Harris, I, I'm not. What I am delaying is the demand of the surety. I've just, I've sort of, and I'm, I guess I'm admitting on record now, drug my feet there on that. That, I think there is a way for us to, to cap this roadway and, and actually be somewhat beneficial to let, to let that capped roadway sit through the winter to see if any issues pop up on us before we put a final surface on it. And so that's actually what I wanted to discuss with the, the surety holder, to see if that would be something that they would be willing to do. Otherwise, we're, we're just going to have to move forward with the, the, the direction that you gave to us back a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. I, that answers my question. I just, I'm, I'm all, always going to be a fan of doing it the right way for the city and for the road, but same, I make sure we're not, we're, we're moving forward to getting the problem resolved.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other questions from members of the commission? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item, the next item. Item number 12 is the Commons, amended PMDP and FMDP. Josh, are you handling?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I am here to discuss item 12, which is the Commons, New Somme Capital. This is four lots at the end of the Commons off of Had, Hancock Street, next to the Gallatin High School between Green Wave and Maple in that general area. Next slide, please, Dustin. What's being proposed is a one-story assisted living facility and a daycare on the existing four lots at the end of Commons Drive. Next slide, please. The, I call it a Tetris shape, but I guess it's a half of a cross on the right-hand side would be the daycare facility, and the assisted living facility would be the structure located on the left side of the screen, the west side of the screen. That would be the assisted living facility taking up the remainder of the area. Next slide, please, Dustin. This is the general architecture that's proposed for the assisted living facility. We don't have specific material breakouts, but we believe that the, there will not be a design alternative proposed with this project. It is a amended PMDP, FMDP for this project. There was originally a PUD dating back to, I believe, the eighties for this area. They called for offices. So we, the applicant is amending that as part of this process. We do not have architecture for the daycare facility, but it has been requested for consideration with the overall Planning Commission agenda. We would hope that the architect could keep the general design with similar proportions and relationships to the assisted living facility. Next slide, please. Okay, that is item 12. And again, Jim, Jim Gilliam or Preston Air, I see Preston, is the applicant for this item.
Would you go back and show us the location? I'm, I'm having trouble placing where this is.
Sure. The, here at the top of the screen is Nashville Pike. This is Gallatin High School here, the large white-topped building. And this is the four lots at the end of Commons Drive off of Hancock Street. So it's behind, I believe it's the Green Wave Apartments that are here on Green, Green Wave Drive. That's hard to say.
It has a social security building.
Yes.
Honestly didn't realize it wasn't developed.
There are six lots total that are still vacant at the end on Commons Drive. And those, then there is an additional vacant lot located here, sort of this pizza wedge shape that's owned by the American Legion next to the dance studio.
Okay. Very good. And we have a representative for the applicant present?
Yes, we do. This is Jim Gillam, Civil Engineer with Wald HFR Design. And as Mr. King said, an assisted living facility is going on the, the western end of the cul-de-sac with 53 beds and the daycare, childcare actually is going in with about a 12,000-square-foot building capacity for 180 children. And the reason we did not have architecture for that building elevation is there is a, there's a different architect working on that project for the, for the childcare portion. I am doing site design for both, both facilities, but the architect is a different architect. So there's the, there's a little bit of the disconnect right there as far as that goes, just in, in getting the plans and, and the, the owner working with that architect independently there for the time being at the, at the smittle deadline. And so we, we certainly have read over your comments. I don't have any, any, any complaints on those whatsoever. And if you got any questions, be glad to answer them.
Mr. Chairman, this is Josh. There is one thing that I forgot to mention. The cul-de-sac is existing and may not meet our current design standards for a fire truck. So we've been working with our fire department to understand how a emergency vehicle would access this type of facility, knowing that they are going to eventually respond to a lot of emergency calls. So we are working with the fire department and the applicant on an auto turn to show how a fire truck would access the front of this building and to ensure that the canopy that comes out over the driveway would be able to meet the clearance level for a fire response vehicle.
And Mr. King, I will add that, you know, we, we did receive your information on the fire truck and working on that. I did confirm with the architect, I have no problem that the canopy would be high enough for a truck to access underneath that. So you're, you're absolutely correct. We, we can accommodate that, no problem.
But even if the canopy was high enough, will the turn radius, will the fire truck be able to make the turn radius if it enters the property?
That is what the auto turn template is going to show us to see. Would the vehicle have to make a backing maneuver or would it be able to enter the cul-de-sac and use the parking lot as a turnaround? What we don't want to create is a situation where the fire truck is having to back out the entire length of Commons Drive or trying to turn around in one of the existing parking lots, because only about half that site is developed at this point. So we're, we're working collaboratively with other city departments to make sure that this is not going to be an issue.
Okay. I, I certainly see, I see your concern. There will be a lot of fire truck responses to this property because they, because they have to respond to every 911 call. Is this the time to change that cul-de-sac and bring it into, you know, to make it conforming? Or is that an, is that, can we not even request that of, of lots that have already been platted?
Mr. Chairman, I think we would like to see what the auto turn template would look like before we go with that route. That would, changing the design of that cul-de-sac and making it larger would eat significantly into the available and developable property. There's also an existing regional detention pond in this southwest corner that also would be very expensive, cost prohibitive to relocate and/or move. So we're, we're going this route before we go with the expanding the cul-de-sac and eating up more of the property, potentially making this bottom lot almost, I don't want to say unbuildable, but wouldn't be feasible for this design.
Completely understand. Any other questions from members of the commission?
No, I don't have any questions. The fire truck access would be my biggest concern on this, and it sounds like you guys are working through that.
Anyone else? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the next item. Item number 13 is Toyota of Gallatin, an amended preliminary master development plan and final master development plan. Josh, are you presenting this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the existing Toyota of Gallatin building located on Nashville Pike. Next slide, please. This is this current site configuration. There's a small used car dealership on the corner, and then there's the building and the facility that we currently know. There is a large undeveloped portion of the lot as it backs up to, I'm not sure if it's a TVA or a Gallatin substation directly behind the property, but it's filled with major electrical equipment that is otherwise unmovable. Next slide, please. So the, this is from an aerial view of the existing dealership and the existing smaller dealership on the corner with parking configuration and the large area to the rear of the lot that's yet undeveloped. Next slide, please. The applicant intends on doing a two-phased modification to the building. Indicated here on the first phase would be an expansion of, off the rear of the building of the service base and a quick service concept located on the side of the building for more kind of drop-and-go oil change-type services. Next slide, please. Phase two involves a major upgrade or a major change to the front of the building with a showroom, office, parts, and wash-dry base. Also located on, here on the edge of the purple is more of a drive, I don't call it a drive-through concept, but this would be more a drive-in service. Next slide, please. The applicant will need a, an alternative architecture approved by this board. The current building, the image is a little bit hard to tell, but it's mostly made of gray panels. The proposed could look a little bit more similar to the Nashville North dealership, which was just completed a couple of years ago. Again, using similar, similar designs with the art, metal architectural panels. And next slide, please. The sides of the building are proposed to be vertical metal panels and then more of the architectural metal on the dealership portion of the building visible from the street. I will say that the sides and rear of the building are not going to be visible from the public right-of-way. They will only be visible from, on the site or directly adjacent to the site. Next slide, please. This is the 3D rendering of the final design with the service reception attached to the front of the building. The other example, the Toyota North dealership did not have that similar service reception base. But this is the, a 3D model of the front of the building as proposed. And we have for item. And we have, uh, for item thirteen, we should have several people joining us, uh, Jason Blakeman. I have Jason, Dennis, Matt, uh, Ryan. Well, we have Dennis, Jason, and Matt currently. Your lines have all been unmuted. Uh, if you all want to get us started, I'll find the rest of the members of your team.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Civil.
Not sure where Matt's at. This is Dennis Reader. Uh, I am the, uh, construction manager for Mr. Stunbo for this project. Uh, we'd be happy to answer a question for you.
Do we have any questions from members of the commission?
I've got a question. The, I guess would be, you know, the top side of the plan where the dealership joins the, uh, adjacent properties or those, there's still a couple of those that are vacant, aren't there? All right.
Yes, there are, uh, three undeveloped lots on grassland that are adjacent to the backside of this property.
Okay. Is that all the same zoning? Is there any requirement for, for buffer, buffer yards or landscaping between the expanded parking lot and buildings of the, of the Toyota dealership and those properties? Or is that all, all the same?
There are, buffer yards are required, uh, in this zoning district for all, for both, everything from Nashville Pike all the way to the back of the site and both sides.
Okay.
I believe it's a, a type ten or a type fifteen. Uh, we may work with the applicant to try and do an amended buffer yard in places where, uh, especially between the existing dealership and the Newton Nissan dealership next to them. It was, it's already been developed, so it, there's a drainage easement between the two. So depending on what the final design looks like, we may not be able to squeeze in trees there. We may have to relocate them elsewhere on the site. But we are working, uh, with the applicant, uh, and their design team to accommodate as much of the buffer yards on the site as possible.
Okay. Now that, that makes sense. Now we've got, you know, Newton, Nissan next to the Toyota dealership and having buffering a dealership to a dealership to me not nearly as important as, as having good buffering behind, especially the, the properties to would be, I guess, the north, uh, the northeast side of the property there.
Mr. Chairman, Josh, if we were dusting, if we can go back to the site plan, the overall site plan. Yeah, this is the existing site. And as you can tell, some of the buffer yards, uh, along the south property boundary are probably the minimum that the code requires. And on the north property line adjacent to those lots that face onto grassland. As they, uh, show, uh, on this plan, they have a kind of a very narrow buffer yard. It probably doesn't meet code. And their, their redesign plan shows that the, and buffer yard would actually be even narrower as you move towards the rear of the property or the south side of the property. We also, uh, want to ensure that interior landscaping and the buffer yards i- in the front portion of the property are retained. Now, any non-conformities that they have now with the parking lot would be allowed to remain. But, uh, we, what would like them to consider closing the driveway that's closest to the intersection of Grassland Drive and Nashville Pike. They have two driveways on Grassland Drive and actually they could convert the area where, uh, one of the driveways is the most northerly driveway to a display or parking area. Uh, also their retention would be an underground retention area on their, their, um, modified plan that would be located in the rear of the property. So it's, if they have retention on the property now, it's probably, um, inadequate for this site. So, uh, Nick may want to address how they're going to try to provide that. But it would be a subsurface, um, I mean, under the parking area or, or the storage area, display area on the rear of the property.
And we have been able to, uh, get Matt on the phone. So Matt, the floor is yours if you'd like to add anything to the discussion.
All right. Thanks, Josh. Uh, again, I, I think Jason, civil engineer, would, would probably add more to this conversation. Um, I can purely just speak from an architectural side point, side of, of view as far as materials and, and design goes though. Um, I don't know if Jason's still muted, but.
So I'll ask a question. It's not about architectural though. I'm just puzzled. I'd never realized until I looked on Google Earth just now, there's a, almost a one and three-quarter acre patch of just brush or trees to the rear of the property. Are there any plans to use that as, uh, inventory storage space or is that what you're talking about? The, is that for the detentioning requirements for this property? Why is that unused and are there any plans to utilize it?
Yes, there are plans, um, to extend the parking into that area. And we would be using underground detention in that area as well.
So I didn't understand that on the plan. Is that part of this plan is to utilize that space?
Correct. Yes. I don't know if there's a slide showing the new work.
Um, I inadvertently took the civil side off. Let me bring it back up for our presentation and our discussion.
And I'll just, while you're doing that, I'll speak a little bit more. If you look at Google Earth, you'll see that the existing Toyota dealership is, is quite proud of the, and proud, I mean, sticking out in front of the Nissan as far as offset from Nashville Pike. So the, the intentions is this new owner of the Toyota dealership is to, um, in the phase two, tear down the existing showroom and we're rebuilding and be more in line with the adjacent Nissan dealership in order to get more, uh, inventory up, out front.
Okay. So you're actually increasing your, in, in essence, you're increasing your building setback from the front.
Correct. Yes.
Um, questions from members of the commission? Well, seeing none, then, um, we'll see you back in a few weeks. Um, thank you. We'll, uh, move on to the next item. Item number fourteen is, uh, Langford Farms Phase One A, uh, final plat. Sharon, you're handling that one?
Yes, uh, this is my month for plats. Um, evidently this is Langford Farms Phase One A. Uh, the next item, number fifteen is Phase One B of Langford Farms. One A is for fourteen residential lots. Uh, it has, it is currently under construction. Um, they have had a preliminary plat. It wa- it was approved in two thousand eighteen and has since expired. It may come along too. You may see it along with this final plat when it goes to actual planning commission meeting. They, they can't really do this one without the other one being approved. They have a one-year lifespan and it was approved in eighteen, so it ran out in nineteen and they missed their chance to, to re, get it re-approved then. Uh, this one, the same thing is happening with, uh, Phase One B. This one has, gonna have thirty-three residential lots. They also had a preliminary plat that was approved in, in two thousand eighteen. And they've had approved construction plans. They're, everything is all set. They just have let the, they need the final plat approved and they have a, um, the preliminary plats have both expired. So they have to have those in too before they can go.
All right. Thank you, Sharon. Do we have a representative for the applicant present?
Uh, we do for this item, Roger Harra. Your line's been unmuted.
Yes, thank you. Um, Roger Harra with TWM Incorporated. And, uh, we're here to request, um, approval, um, of this, these two final plats submitted. Uh, we're just responsible for the final plat portion of this project. And, uh, Kim Lee Horn and Associates did the design engineering behind it and the preliminary plat supplemental. Um, and, uh, I'm not exactly sure of the status of the preliminary plat we submitted or, um, what their, uh, plan, strategy is for that. But, uh, we submitted these plats and hopefully we can, um, go through the process and get them approved. Try to answer any questions you might have.
Roger, this is Josh. Uh, I reached out to Ryan and his team today. They are working feverishly to get those documents updated and uploaded to us on Thursday for the preliminary plat for this project. And it, um, they're also going to be coordinating with you to make sure that all the line work matches.
Very well.
Thank you, Josh.
I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Harris?
Yeah. So my question is, are we, are we anticipating that preliminary plats that had previously been approved are going to match? Or, or are there changes between the two?
Uh, are you, well, I think I can answer that. We based our final plat as, I mean, somewhat on the preliminary plat, but it was on their, their up-to-dated plans involving probably the construction plans and, and, and everything else. So we kind of incorporated it all up to date as of probably two weeks ago. So I fully expect that it's all going to match, um, pretty close unless they're just something minor that they changed.
I guess Sharon, when, I guess when this comes back to us, we see both the preliminary and the finals at the same time. Is that what we're anticipating?
If they come, if they come in by Thursday, yes, they will both be presented at planning commission meeting.
Okay.
One of each for each section. Yes.
Okay. Gotcha. So, um, okay. Well, I guess I would, I would just ask the staff carefully to make sure that everything's in line. If there's any changes that plan was already approved of the primaries and the files that just called out. I'm sure it's all, you know, being as, seeing that now the preliminary plats are expired, it would almost seem logical. We revisit that and get that fixed before moving forward to the final plats. But as long as everything's in line, I don't see a problem with it.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on, um, to the next item. Item number sixteen is, uh, the Vineyard Preliminary Plat. Dustin, you're handling this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So this is, this was originally part of Martin's Vineyard over off Blackshear at the end of Concord Drive. And there's not really much changed. They've reconfigured the lots. They're calling this the Vineyard now. So it won't be a part of Martin's Vineyard. Um, it's pretty much straight, straight zoning, R twenty. The only exception that they're looking for, I've circled in red there. They, they'd like to have an alternative pedestrian walkway plan. Reason being is that there's a large tree there that they want to preserve right in the path of the sidewalk. So they'd like to have a alternate approved for that. Um, we, we would like to encourage them. They only have a buffer yard on the extreme kind of southern edge of the development. And they have some drainage areas running through that they put in easements. But we, we wanted to encourage them to put these things in open area tracks, uh, common area tracks. But, um, our code doesn't currently require that, so we're not, uh, really sure if we want to make that a requirement. Um, especially for such a small subdivision, but that's basically the only issues we see. Thank you.
Okay. We have a representative for the applicant present?
We have, uh, Joe Godfrey, Daniel. Uh, Joe Godfrey and Daniel with ACES. Your lines have been unmuted.
Yes, this is Joe Godfrey with the Godfrey Group. Um, just to address, uh, the drainage easement area. The, I do not mind doing that. The question would be, if we turn that into a common area, it's going to reduce the lot size and there's a required twenty thousand square foot lot. And so how do we do that if I make that entire easement area? Cause I'd have to pull it all the way to the rear property line, the southern property line, or I guess the kind of the western. That would then reduce the lot sizes to below twenty thousand square feet.
Uh, which, I'm sorry, staff?
That, that is a concern that we've been also wrestling with, with this development. We do encourage, um, some of these water quality measures, uh, buffer yards, we, we encourage those to be in open space as much as possible. Um, we cannot fully enforce that. That's still a recommendation. And in cases like, uh, in situations like this where it is a small piece of land, uh, infilled into existing development, it does make that quite a bit more complicated.
Josh, what if we were to pull the easement all the way to the property line in the back? And then I had language in the, uh, HOA documents describing the usage on that area. And it would basically act as a common area. But it wouldn't be platted as a common area. It would be platted as a, an easement. But I would just go ahead and make it run all the way to the rear property line behind those lots.
I think that's something that we could, um, we can work through. Uh, we'll also work with, um, Lance and Nick and the engineering team on the water quality buffers that are in there as part of the old, overall stormwater and water quality measures on how, uh, access is maintained for those, especially, especially for any kind of permanent stormwater features for water quality measures to ensure that the inspectors have access to it, unrestricted access to it.
When I'm, I did a preliminary meeting, uh, before the pre-op meeting and, uh, discussed that issue and I've added an access to the easement in the cul-de-sac between lots eight and nine. So that if somebody needed to access that, they could actually park in the cul-de-sac there and be able to get through that easement into the entire area that would be the, um, drainage and stormwater management area. And that's wide enough to be able to get access vehicles through if we ever had to do any, you know, repair work or reconstruction, whatever it might be. Um, and it would also act as an area for the maintenance to get in there to ma- maintain that entire area.
I, I, I think that's a good idea. And I know as we, as we go forward, we may look at somebody changing our, our code to require the water quality to be in open spaces. I do think it'd be an improvement if, if it's still on the property, you kind of, Joe, what you're suggesting with the, you know, with an easement, with the language and your restrictive covenants of how, how that. restrictive covenants of how, how that uses. I think our biggest concern is, is trying to have something in place over the long term that as these properties change hands, there's something there to make sure people understand that, you know, it's, it's graded that way. Those quality, those features are there for a reason and they have to stay that way. So, um, you know, I personally wouldn't be opposed to seeing, you know, a variance or, or, you know, a smaller lot size to get the open space. Cause at the end of the day, it's still the same amount of, you know, real estate out there. So I'm less concerned about that. But, you know, maybe, you know, for some of these projects that are caught in the middle, uh, a, an easement with language and the covenants that, that make sure the, the future owners know the use of that property and, and how it needs to be maintained would be helpful.
Okay.
Hey, quick question for engineering. Uh, I know that property I've, there's a, there's a pretty good dip at the, where the Concord Drive currently ends and where it's gonna connect in there where there's a lot of, I think stormwater is having an open, it's not really a ditch, but there's a lot of water that comes to that area. How, how's the, is there a bridge or how's the road being constructed there to, to not impede the, the natural flow of water that comes through that area?
Uh, yeah, part of the design of the, of the whole project, um, the engineers and they can speak to that. I believe they're unmuted. Uh, Daniel's on there. But they have, uh, they've looked at several alternatives for that crossing. And, uh, we've selected one that, that meets, uh, all requirements for getting the stormwater through and under the road.
Okay.
Well, that, that has all been looked at and, and meets all the requirements of everything. It was calculated for the volume of water going through there.
Okay.
Hey, this is, this is Daniel with Art Consulting Engineers. Uh, we, we did evaluate, uh, several different options there. And, uh, what we're actually gonna be going with are three large diameter, uh, pipes, uh, that have been sized to handle the, the flow that is currently coming through that area. Uh, and it'll, um, that'll be able to bypass that underneath the road.
Okay. Yes, I, I know I think when this, at one point it was, there was a box culvert through there. So I'm just curious what you guys are doing with it.
Box culvert was gonna be, uh, cost prohibitive. So we tried to, try to look at different options that we could do that would, uh, allow the development to continue.
Gotcha. And, all right, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I want to mention that, uh, the adjacent properties will be platted as a separate minor subdivision. Those are shown as lot fifteen and lot sixteen. This drawing that are adjacent to the north of, of this proposed subdivision. So those are being reviewed right now as a minor subdivision.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Seeing none, then we'll, um, we'll move on to the next item.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before we go further, uh, I neg- I neglected to introduce our newest member of staff. Uh, her name is Suzanne Simon. She is a fantastic addition to our team. You'll start to see more communication from her, uh, related to planning commission things and administrative type items. Uh, she is, she just started, today is her second Monday with us. So she's just entering her second week with us. She's been sitting patiently through the entire meeting to, uh, to this point to understand how our meetings work, how it can flow, and also to provide as a backup to Mary Ann or myself, uh, should we ever need one going forward in the future. So Suzanne, your microphone's unmuted. If you want to say, uh, a quick hello and, uh, welcome to the team.
Hi, everyone. So happy to be here. Looking forward to working with everyone.
Good to have you, Suzanne.
Welcome.
Good to know you.
Thank you.
So I think it's our last item, but do you have a discussion item? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Um, members of planning commission, where you go, and we've mentioned this before, is that, um, city council has asked us to look into some proposed changes to the zoning code that would modify Article twelve, Section twelve point oh one oh two oh to address fence design placement regulations as well as, uh, possibly buffer yard, uh, requirements in situations where residential lots are adjacent to, uh, certain commercial zonings. Uh, this, similar to another item that you worked on last month, is the result of a decision by the Board of Zoning Appeals to, uh, grant a variance for a fence on a property that's zoned residential or I believe it was R forty zoning that backs up to MRO zoning. And this was, uh, just off Nashville Pike. Currently, uh, in the residential zoning district, you're allowed to have a six-foot fence and you can build that fence onto the property line. Uh, properties in residential areas that are adjacent to commercial areas have to also provide a buffer yard and vice versa. The commercial properties have to provide a buffer yard adjacent to residential. In this particular case, the applicant, uh, I wouldn't call applicant, but the person requesting the change in the code from council erected an eight-foot tall fence on the rear property line and had the nice side. And you can see this is photographed here is the nice side of the fence facing to the adjacent property owner. Our, our code requires that so that the nicer side, except in the case of a shadow box fence, and it doesn't apply. But in the case, this is the, similar to the type of fence that was constructed. And the nice side or the finished side face is required to face out to the adjacent property. Well, the person who erected the eight-foot fence on their residentially zoned property not only exceeded the height restriction by two feet, but also placed the, the unfinished side of the fence facing out to the adjacent property owner. So there were at least two violations that occurred there. Uh, in addition, the person who erected the fence did not obtain a permit from the city and that could have averted a lot of these issues. But, uh, nonetheless, they went ahead and constructed a fence without a permit. We were notified by area property owners of the fence being erected and did an investigation which led to a BZA case. And ultimately, the BZA granted a variance and applied some conditions to that, that variance that the applicant does not want to abide by. Put it bluntly. So what the applicant has done is essentially requested through the council for the planning commission to consider a change in the code that would possibly allow for an alternative design or fences to change the code to, uh, I guess permit an eight-foot fence in those situations where residential butts commercial. One of the, uh, and, and perhaps even the finished side. I don't know about that, but we'll have to discuss that later. But at this time, um, we've got, you know, a couple of violations and that are based simply because of a permit was not requested. And, uh, in addition to that, the building code requires that fences of this height be structurally approved by an engineer. So we got another problem that, that comes up here is that we have a fence that was not approved by a structural engineer, obviously, because we don't have a permit for it. So, you know, the, the issues of, uh, non-compliance are piling up in this case. So these, I, I don't know that we're, we're gonna ask you to move quickly on this, meaning that we may not have an ordinance, ordinance together in time for you to, uh, review this at the next meeting. But I wanted to put it out there, at least for discussion purposes right now. And, uh, our building official is also, uh, present at this meeting and would be able to answer questions about the structural requirements for a fence. So you might want to explore, uh, if you were wanting to allow an, uh, fence of this height or even taller or brick wall or something on the residential property, what kind of restrictions would you wanna place on it? Uh, what kind of zoning districts would you might wanna restrict it to? You might not want it in all zoning districts that are adjacent to commercial. In this case, it's adjacent to MRO and the, the uses adjacent or on the rear of these properties are professional offices. They're not retail, uh, or drive-through restaurants or things of that sort. So they're low, low impact type of, uh, uses that are adjacent to this yard. So, um, we can provide more details about the specific case if you're interested in it. Again, it was already decided by the BZA and depending on what results from this case through the planning commission and ultimately the city council, the need for that or to apply the directive of the BZA may not be necessary. Uh, what we're doing is staying, uh, any action by, uh, the city to enforce this until this issue is resolved. So, uh, meaning this fence is, remains standing as it, it was constructed, even though it's in violation. Once the planning commission and council make final resolution of this, it may require them to make modifications to the fence. So I'll leave it at that and, uh, we'll ask for any questions and/or discussion that y'all may have about that from all staff members that we have here.
Any questions?
So Bill, uh, you were saying the fence, if the, uh, resident had, uh, obtained a permit and they had, would the resident, I guess after learning how to do it the correct way, would they have asked for a variance at this, or at the point?
I, I don't know. I can't answer that question. Although if they would have come to our office and applied for a fence permit, we would have instructed them right off the bat that a six-foot fence would be allowed, but that an eight-foot fence would not and that the finished side would have to face out and not face in. So we would have told them what the code required, um, at that time. And, you know, whether they go out and build a, a fence and violation of the code or not, whether they're aware of it, I, I don't know. But, uh, we certainly wouldn't have condoned a fence in this regard unless they were able to obtain a variance.
And, uh, this is Josh. For the record, we are discussing a zoning ordinance change that would affect all the properties in the city of Gallatin, uh, not the specifics of the BZA decision, uh, which was made earlier this year. Um, there is, the, the appeals process for the BZA decision, um, is not through this board, but the zoning change would be something that would be heard and evaluated by this board before it's sent to city council. So we are discussing a change to the residential or commercial fence standards and that would apply citywide, not just in one particular case.
And let me add also that if this fence were constructed on the commercially zoned property or fence and or wall, again, it would still, with this height would still have to be approved by the building department. But it could be this height. It could be up to this eight-foot height if that's what they wanted. Only if it were constructed on the commercial side of the, of the boundary line. But because it was constructed on the residential side, that's fence height is limited to six feet.
Okay, so it's more safety and wellness, not just the height, just because the height, it's the, the structure part of the, the aspect?
I, I don't re- remember why they constructed it eight-foot instead of six-foot. Most of them are six-foot in residential areas, but they elected to go eight feet for some reason.
You know, in general, talking about these fences, I, you know, I, I can see the logic if, you know, if you've got residential property that's bordering commercial property and, you know, the commercial side can build an eight-foot tall fence that meets the standards. It, it would be logical to say, you know, if you've got residential, you know, on the residential side, if you want to build an eight-foot tall fence that, you know, could easily be, you know, your property anyway. I don't necessarily have a problem with that as long as it's all done to the same standards that would be required of the commercial fence. Um, if, if it's really an issue that needs to be addressed. So, um, I don't, Mr. McCord, can you answer maybe the question too is, you know, how, how often is this, is this an issue or is this, is this something that is, you know, coming up very frequently or is it just a, once every couple of years or, or when? I don't, I don't have big of an issues really is.
Well, I, I can't say that it hasn't happened or they don't exist in the city, but this is the first one I'm aware of where an eight-foot fence was erected in residential property. And so, um, and again, there, there are offenses in even further to the east of this area where there are fences and or walls that are eight feet high, but they're placed on the commercial property as opposed to the residential property.
If, as, as the way our code is today, if, if someone has residential property backing up a commercial property, wanted to do an eight-foot tall fence, could they ask for a variance and can get it granted to build an eight-foot tall fence as soon as it met all the codes?
Yeah, that would be the process they'd have to go through. And that's what, ultimately, after they were not, they were cited, that's what they, they did is they asked for variance. But, uh, the variance that they got was not what they were expecting. So.
I understand. And then, and not, not talking about that case in particular, but just in, in general throughout the city, there's, there's already, already a means in place of, if, 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 if I had property that backed up to commercial office buildings and I want an eight-foot tall fence, there is a way to, to request that variance before you built it where, you know, if it made sense it could be granted.
So, Mr. Harris, uh, what Mr. McCord is saying is if the commercial owner came in to request the fence, we would allow it to be eight-foot. But if it's the residential homeowner that's asking to have the fence put in, we would restrict it to the residential six-foot tall fence without a variance through the BZA.
Right. But it, but if the residential, some, the residential property that could request a variance to build an eight-foot tall fence that they wanted to.
They could through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. So I, I don't know. Just, just not other, it seems there's already a process in place to address this. I don't know why I, why we would need to go through the trouble of amending the ordinance.
Well, I, I, the main thing is that, that's a unique situation is that we do have places where residents, residential zoning backs up to commercial zoning. And we do allow an eight-foot tall barrier, fence, wall, whatever. Uh, on, I mean, you look at this photograph here, if the property line was in that green grass on the right-hand side of the screen, if, only simply because it was on the commercially zoned property, it could be eight-foot tall. And simply because it's one foot over on the other residential property has to be six feet tall. I can understand that in, we could refine, if that's what the board wanted to do, we could refine our code to allow only in those cases where there is commercial property adjacent to residential to allow for a eight-foot tall fence, only in those circumstances. But that's not how the code's written now. So they do have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals if they wanted to erect a taller fence.
How hard would it be for you to write a sample just for us to see? How it?
I, I could do that. I, I can do a draft of that. I want them to make sure that other sections of the code are not adversely affected as well. And again, keep in mind that, uh, whether it's commercial or residentially zoned, it's gonna have to be a structurally approved engineered fence. So there may be some footers and some other areas on the property that, you know, you're gonna be pouring foundation to support that fence. And I don't know how far into the ground those things are gonna have to be placed, but it's gonna be, uh, more expensive than just erecting a board fence.
Yeah. Well, it's at, at eight-foot tall, there's a safety factor that comes into play. And I think the, the building official would talk about that. That's probably what he would tell us is that there becomes a safety issue once you get to a certain height. But I, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to allowing an eight-foot tall fence in cases where the commercial property would already be entitled to put an eight-foot tall fence. And that, that's, that's logical. So just, you know, whether, you know, I go back to kind of what we said on the other issue for, for solving a problem that really needs to be solved.
So, Mr. Harris, um, I, I believe the city only instituted fence permits within the past, uh, two years. Bill or Mary Ann, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, formally, we've always had design requirements and standards for fences, but we never required a permit. And you can create, you can obviously tell what that invites. That invites people to put up fences not in compliance with the, the code, cause they're not maybe aware of the code. So that means that we'd have to go out and, and regulate a fence that we did not permit to begin with. So that, we did have a lot of problems where people were putting their fences up in the right of way. And we still have some of those things out there today even. So they've erected fences under the old code. So they've erected fences under the old code in violation of the code, but we didn't permit it to, you know, kind of head them off at the pass, if you will.
So making more people aware that there's a permit process for fencing, which is something new for some people.
Yeah.
Education part.
And that's the reason we made it a permitted process, because we were getting these continuous violations. People were just erecting fences where they thought their property line was, not where a survey property line is. So it created conflicts.
All right. If there's no other discussion on that, I'll just bring up the point. We have, for our October twenty-sixth meeting, we're going to have all seventeen of these items. I don't assume, will any of these be consented into items?
Yeah, some of these plats in particular probably will be, including the Langford Farm preliminary and final plats. Based on y'all's discussion tonight, I think that probably the Speedway extension will be a consent item. The Chick-fil-A plan probably will be, I would imagine probably the Winsong Plats would also be consent. Well, let me, let me, let me just try to identify the ones that we don't think will be consent.
Bill, actually, if you don't mind, I think the Chick-fil-A, since they're going to be modifying the architecture to put the canopy over both parking lanes, I would like to see that on the regular agenda, so we just.
Okay.
About that.
Okay, we'll do that.
Who else?
The Vintage Baker Crossing apartment amendment will be a regular agenda item. And the Noble Park Townhomes, I doubt that will be. I mean, I think we wrapped up most of the details on that one at the time of of preliminary master plan. The Commons, I'm not sure yet. The Toyota probably will have that as a regular item, because it's effectively a rebuild of the whole site. They are, I think, intending to stay open through all this reconstruction and phasing, but it will be a different type of site than what you got out there now. And the Langford Plats will probably be, yeah, consent, and the Vineyard, I guess that would be consent too. So most of our agenda will be consent items. We try, that's why we have the longer work sessions, so you all can work out any of the big concerns. You certainly, of course, can lift anything from the consent agenda if something comes up, or there's a dispute of some sort. We can certainly lift any consent agenda item and place it on the regular agenda.
Well, all right, so it's, I still have a hard time gauging how long our meeting will be. I mean, it took two hours tonight. The reason I'm asking is that last month, we had a speaker that Josh had lined up, but we had to bump that to a future date. Are we trying to put that training on the tail end of our meeting on the twenty-sixth, or is that for a later date?
Thank you, Mr. Preier. That's a great question. What I was going to engage the opinion of this board to see, do you want to tack it on to the end, that last hour of training to the end of this meeting? Or do we want to try for more of like a lunchtime engagement event held virtually on a different day of the week?
I think it may be hard to get everybody for a lunchtime engagement. You've got everybody's attention here. I just couldn't judge how long our meeting on the twenty-sixth is going to be. Bill indicated that most of these items will be consent.
I imagine things that aren't consented into items, we've hashed out pretty thoroughly, so even though they're on the regular agenda, I don't see any of them taking a long time to talk through, just my opinion.
I have to see if the, the person we had to delay the last time would be available as well.
I'm personally open to putting on the, the meeting if it works. We need to get that out of the way.
I'd rather do it in October than November, so.
Okay, we can arrange for that. There's also some additional training opportunities that I've emailed all of you about that the Tennessee American, the Tennessee chapter of the American Planning Association is putting on. It's a full four hours of training that will be held virtually, I believe, in November. That's an option that's available to everyone, along with the other options that were identified that I emailed all of you. We do have funds available in the planning commission budget for training events. Unfortunately, at this point in time, everything is being done virtually. There are no in-person training events scheduled or being held by anyone right now.
What is the meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock?
That's the council committee meeting.
And why would I've gotten a invite to that?
I don't know, but you're welcome to attend.
Okay.
Anybody can attend. The public can attend. It's just, it's their work session for their items.
Got you.
Y'all have a couple of items that y'all have made recommendations to them that will be discussed, including the architectural and compatibility standards that y'all reviewed last month, as well as the Greensboro Village Transit Resident Development Extension or Expansion there across from the Addison Apartments. So those two items are from the planning commission that are being forwarded up to the county or city council for consideration. One other thing that I wanted to ask is make sure that everybody got a copy of the visual preference survey that GNRC did for their preparation of the comp plan. Just want to make sure everybody got a copy of that. I think you got an electronic. Johnny, I think, picked up a copy of the community survey as well, and a detailed copy of that. So if you have any questions about that, or you want us to discuss that in more detail, we'll have an opportunity to discuss more, a lot more detail about the development of that comp plan, because we're ratcheting that up, and that's going to spend, take a lot of our time, I'm thinking, for the next three or four months. So we're going to be probably scheduling a regular item on both our work sessions as well as our regular meeting to discuss the comp plans, developing specific policies, identifying character areas and overlays of character areas, and the strategy for how they're going to set that up. Now, we'll have GNRC involved in that as well, so be aware that that's going to be an item that will be concurring, recurring, I should say, and we'll expect to spend some time on that, both in and away from meetings.
So, Dr. Orgain, thank you for bringing that to our attention. If you are watching this at home, there will be a different Zoom meeting link information going live on the website tomorrow morning about the city council, council committing tomorrow. There is an issue with the webinar ID for tomorrow's city council work session. It is using the same information as this meeting, so you will get an automatic error if that, and I'll be working with Jeff in the morning to get that fixed. But thank you, Dr. Orgain, for bringing that to our attention. That is a issue that we can avoid by working together tonight or tomorrow morning to get that fixed.
If there are no other items, I will mention that when you mentioned city council, it reminded me that Councilman Fennell was unable to join us tonight because he was called to a community meeting in his capacity of councilman.
Mr. Chairman, and this is Chuck Stewart, building official.
Yes, Mr. Stewart.
I wanted to say something, but I got caught in the middle of a thunderstorm, and you wouldn't be able to hear me here. I will go back to the fence. I want you to keep in mind that most of the time on commercial properties, the fences are chain-linked fences that are eight feet tall. Wood fences cause us issues due to the hundred-and-fifteen mile an hour wind speed that we are currently caught into here in middle Tennessee. It's about, all about airborne debris. That's why eight-foot fences would require engineer-designed bigger footings and better attachments to the planks that are on fences. So I just wanted to tell you guys that while I had an opportunity there, but like I said, I had a rainstorm come in, and you wouldn't hear me if I said anything.
Mr. Stewart, would you, would you have concerns about the eight-foot fences on the residential properties if they complied with all of the regulations that are put on eight-foot wooden fences on commercial properties?
Well, yes, I would, and I'm explaining, I'll try to explain that. I fought for this fence ordinance so that the planning, that the planning department would know when someone wanted to put a fence in. They come in and want to put a fence in, it's in a right-of-way or an easement, and then if the utility company goes out, they're going to take the fence down and just move it out of their way, and they're not going to reestablish it. So that would give the planning, planning department an opportunity to explain to people who want to put a fence in their yard. If you put it in easement, it's a possibility that work could be done, your fence could be removed and put back at your own expense. But with the one-hundred-and-fifteen mile an hour wind speed that most of Tennessee is in now, airborne debris during a tornado or even a real severe thunderstorm is an issue. When planks start leaving the fence, they become missiles. So we would like to, a building permit, and the code requires a building permit for a fence once we get past that six-foot high fence. And the reason it's in there is because of that. So we would question that, and then we would require those engineer designs on those fences so that we're not losing the fence in a storm.
This is really good information. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Staff, are there any other items on, any other discussion items? If there's no other business, then we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.